Right.
Uh, zoom, please, this is a recording. Also, at the end of this meeting tonight, I will convene an executive session to discuss personal matters and we'll leave the room. Come back to the room at the conclusion of the night. So at this time, uh, please stand for the invitation by Julie Munden.
Will you back after Paul worked today? Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work on behalf of the citizens of Sauterton. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of borough officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant us to have the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. The sense of the true needs of the citizens of Sauterton and the ability that we may work together in harmony. Disagreement. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what will please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved borough of Sauterton. In Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Julie. Peter being standing for the pledge. I pledge my allegiance to the high. And EBBCA, and well, thank you, please, for the recorded note, the attendance and outcomes.
Counselor Shally and our junior counselor.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. And at this moment, uh, a lot of you are for the same reason, but I'll turn it over to the mayor for the first presentation. Thank you, Tracy. Well, we are, a lot of us are in the room tonight to honor Mike Cole. In true Mike fashion, he did not want any of you here. Actually, no fanfare whatsoever. Uh, if we wanted to, we could pack ten rooms this size with Mike Cole in. So thanks to all of you who are here that, uh, you really have worked closely with Mike in. So, uh, so, Mike, I didn't invite any, so I can't. Mike Cole is Sauterton Borough. Oh, and I have to say, I'm definitely gonna get choked up halfway through this. Sauterton Borough. He's been employed by Sauterton since nineteen eighty-two, an astonishing forty years on the job. You might think a town with the same leadership for forty years could be stagnant. But think about Sauterton in nineteen eighty-two and look at us now. One thing that I appreciate Mike most for is being a bridge builder. The Montgomery Theater, the Boys and Girls Club, Main Street Improvements, Sauterton Community Park, Northbound, the weight building, the freight building, the list goes on. These are just some of examples of the dynamic borough-led project that required creative thinking by this municipality. There were many people involved in the current resurgence of Sauterton, but the thread that ties them all together, working behind the scenes in his own quiet way was Mike Cole. And Mike's been here for so long that he was also involved in many capital assets that we now take for granted. The sewer treatment plant, the Sauterton Pool, and this very building. As you might remember, Mike started his career here on Main Street. Mike knows where every tree is planted in Sauterton, where every sewer line runs, and where every grand dollar has been spent. He knows, because he's been here to see it all happen, because Mike Cole is Sauterton Borough. And on the flip side, Mike's also not been afraid to answer. He started his career on a road crew and was never afraid to leave his office to pick up a shovel, clean up a mess, or even go on a fire. This readiness to do whatever for the day, for the town, for the day. Being the borough manager is not an easy job. Not only do you have to make hard decisions in the town that Mike lives, like he also has worked for many dozens elected officials over the days. There have been some big personalities in these seats. Charlie Alabach, Abe Clemmer, Ed Huntthicker, Brian Goshow, just to name a few. I'm sure Mike had some good war stories and probably some from this very council that he prefers to not share. But his willingness to work with everyone, engage with community groups, and do whatever is best for the residents of this borough is what made Mike a favorite for everyone in Sauterton. The job also requires many long nights and problem-solving whenever duty calls. So we owe each other gratitude to his wife Kathleen and his whole family for their support and for lending Mike to us for so long. And I have to thank Mike on a personal. When I was sixteen years old, I thought, right there, that was the junior borough counselor. And I went to college to study public administration, so I I could be Mike Cole. We have very different leadership styles, and I'm sure I caused Mike many headaches. I'll never be able to thank you personally enough for everything that you've done for Sauterton and everything that you've done for me. Mike Cole is who lives and breathes Sauterton. Mike, there are no words that can sum up the thanks and gratitude that are owed to you by this community. The best we can do is tonight, say thank you and wish you a relaxing burn after forty dedicated years of service to this community. So Mike, from the bottom of our hearts, we say thank you for everything. You don't have to introduce yourself.
I don't know if I was ever here looking in. Uh, Dan, thank you. Tracy, thank you. And counsel, thank you. Uh, I don't wanna do a long speech, but out in the lobby, that plaque hangs on the that plaque was when this building was renovated. The names on that plaque are were ever important to me because those individuals provided a twenty-two-year-old kid a chance to become at, on March twenty-second of nineteen eighty-two, became an assistant borough manager to, uh, to Sauterton Borough. And it was because of those people who really just trusted me. I mean, now this came from Quakertown. I had a bachelor's degree, but I was green. Um, but, um, those people meant an awful lot to me. Most of them have passed, but John Young and Greg Ott remain. And they are always in my heart. Also, I just want to go back in time a little bit and recognize a woman by the name of Elaine Frederick. I don't know if anybody knows who Elaine Frederick in the municipal building at one seventeen Main Street where creative, Alabach Creative is. She was the borough secretary for Sauterton Borough, probably for as long, if not longer than me. And back in that timeframe, the borough secretary formed all of the tasks that the modern manager does today. And if you go back in the vault, you will find volumes of minute books signed by Elaine Frederick that documented the history of the borough. Another fabulous woman who I worked with is Esther Stout. And some people in this room know Esther, but, uh, Mr. and Elaine were in the, uh, office when, when I walked in, March twenty-second in nineteen eighty-two. They welcomed me with open arms. They mentored me. They taught me. They showed, um, all the things that I needed to know to advance my career. Another important person is, Elton Plank was the manager at the time. He served as manager for about thirteen years. He was only the second manager in the history of the borough. I was the third. But Dell was probably the best mentor you could ever ask for. Um, he took the time to show me variety of things in the borough, taught me different things, showed me the history of the borough, set me up for success going forward. I thought it would work here for a few years and maybe move on. Dell was rather young at the time. Dell served as manager, not only in Saturn, but Franconia and Lower Southford. He retired in Lower Southford. But, um, Dell Plank was the one that moved first. Um, and that same group of people on that plaque put faith in me again in July of nineteen eighty-four and promoted me to the position as borough manager. And, uh, there again, that's where it all started with, with those individuals. My career was not me. My career was councils. The many council over the years, number of Americans room again tonight. They volunteered their time. I often said, I get paid. They do not. So I never wanted them to take the brunt of complaints. I wanted to make sure I had everything in order for them. Did everything I could do to implement their policies, their procedures. And I also need to really thank the many borough employees. We had a tremendous crew. We still do. We're in this room. Without them, we would not have, never have accomplished what we accomplished. Steve, who is my cousin, not my brother, my cousin. And we, we come from a generation, uh, our fathers, our grandfather worked in cell results. So we knew what it was gonna take. And we devoted that effort, just like our parents did, to this borough. And we live, we both live in this borough. But every project that you see, every thing that we've accomplished, from the pool to the downtown, all have our crew on it. I thank the councils over the years who sometimes scratched their heads when I would say, I think we could make something like this work, could do it. And, and for the most part, we did. And I will hold those successes forever dear to me. I thank my family, as Dan brought, my family is with me tonight again. Gave up a lot of time for meetings and all that, but, um, they understood what I needed to do. The, uh, the mayor, um, Charlie Alabach, as I had many mentors growing up, but Charlie Alabach was particularly an individual who I, I really enjoyed. He would visit me almost every day. Um, sometimes just to talk, sometimes to vent, but, um, he visited me probably thirty-plus years. Charlie Alabach had one major philosophy that stuck with me from the day I started. And Charlie Alabach said and preached that a man has got to give back more to the community than he takes. And he preached that, and he preached that. And I hope I've lived to uphold that because I felt strongly about that. So with that, I thank everybody in this room. I thank all the council members, the committee members that I've worked with and all of my employees I will I will miss. And I am very humbled to say I, I really appreciated this, this long ride. Um, it was the only thing I ever wanted to do. And I only hope that Charlie Alabach, there was people out there in particular would give me a nod and also say, job well done. I, uh, I thank you, Dan. I thank you, Tracy. I thank the community for giving me this opportunity. And I hope and wish the best for everybody going forward. Thank you.
Now, I suspect that over half of you did not come here to us tonight, so I would like to invite you for all that, only if you see Mike, Mike, if you don't mind going out in the foyer and anyone that wants to spend some time with Mike and his family for a couple of minutes, you're free to slip out quietly there. Or you can also stay here as long as you like. And as I always say, you're probably missing, like, you're missing some great television. Mike, thank you so much. Hey, moving right along, uh, for the, you know, we've, Stacy has improved the efficiency of the approval. Instead of three or four different approvals, uh, both now proving one consent agenda. So, uh, will one of the, uh, council make a motion, please, for approval of the consent agenda, which would include all, all minutes from March? Uh, will it simply hold the bills?
Mister President, make a motion to approve the minutes from March, the March fourth, twenty twenty-four, regular for council meeting, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four work session, and approve the bills for the month, March, and the reoccurring bills in the month of February, twenty twenty-four.
Bell second. Yeah, motion by Counselors Littlefield and Walsack for approval of the March minutes, both work session and regular session, as well as the bills, which include the returning bills for people and the regular bills for the month of, of March as well. Uh, are there any necessary amendments to the minutes or anything? Okay, then, here are none. Uh, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. And Stacy, I'll turn it back over to you. I think you have the planned, uh, presentation.
So, um, I'm gonna actually, uh, let, uh, let Sarah kind of take over and introduce herself, but, um, I'm fairly excited to have Sarah here. Here has our finance director, and she just started that. She's done a great job. Uh, so we're also gonna have to find a new one, try to scratch her, but I'm gonna let her introduce herself.
Uh, hello, everyone. I'm welcome to you. I'm, I'm human, Sarah. Um, I, I'm here from Amay, right? They're, they're their borough manager. Um, I'm living in the town with my husband. Uh, we moved here in this area about two years ago. Um, he works for Merck in Landdale. Um, they're originally, we were from Chippensburg, where we both kind of moved and worked. So, um, we're both very happy to be in a very major area of, 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 digging and clearing stuff and getting ours, our hands dirty and picking it up.
Welcome aboard. That's, I, um, if you're okay, we'll make a motion as a moment. We have a motion for appointment of, uh, Sarah, Sarah Jarrett Eaton as treasurer. Mister President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sarah Jarrett Eaton in the position of treasurer. I'm second. Okay, great. I have motion by Counselors Danana, seconded by Counselor Rogers, uh, for the appointment of Sarah Jarrett, Jarrett Eaton as the borough treasurer. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Sarah. And, that's it.
All right. Hi, everyone. Um, okay, let me pull up some notes here. Um, we are really busy right now getting everything situated. Next month is our first third Friday event. Um, I have a bunch more bands booked. I think we're switching it up this year. I'm bringing in a lot of local group. Um, which I hope will bring and, and what have you. So I think both stages are gonna be well represented by people of this area this year. Um, again, I've got a run on food stocks. Everyone wants to be wonderful. Um, I did wanna, and, and if this needs to happen at another time, but I also just wanted to make sure that I didn't need to formally request use of the parking lot again, or is that something that has been allowed now for this ongoing for third Fridays? I just wanted to make sure because I am getting more vendors and I am kind of using that space already in my head. So I didn't want to assume anything. Okay, I just didn't want to assume. Yeah, I'm filling it up and then I'm thinking, uh-oh. So, um, well, thank you. Um, so that'll be fun. Um, so we're getting, you know, everything squared away for that first event. I've been talking actually even to some local reporters once specifically who's new, assigned to our area from WHYY. And I'd like to try and bring her out to do a piece, uh, for that first third Friday event. So I've been in constant contact with her. Um, in terms of our committees, right now, the beautification committee is in the process of accepting ideas and applicants for the art banner project throughout town. And so I know that Harry and his committee are working on um, facade grant committee, uh, economic development, sorry, is dealing with facade grants, which is actually getting some really good applications. And we've entered the first facade grant already, the Cole Gallery, which is on the corner. And he's still functioning up. Um, he's painting the whole outside of the building, fixing some windows and such. So we're still receiving applications. Just talked to someone today, um, our economic development, going on with our committee. So, um, as they come through, we're addressing those. So that's really nice that people are reaching out to us about that. Um, along the lines of economic development, our next business lights event, we're going to have on Wednesday, May eighth. That's gonna be held at Brass Collar Brewery. Hopefully, it'll be a nice night. We can be outside on the patio there. And this is gonna be a informal Q and A with members of the Economic Development Committee and other members from Sauterton Connects, but more specifically, ask some questions, highlight, um, and present the revitalization plan that we've all, uh, were presented to Chloe and just kind of talk about the town, answer any questions. We're hoping that, that that kind of outside atmosphere might draw some more businesses. Um, and it's the hour of five to seven type timing. Um, already got some RSVPs, so that's great. And, um, last but not least, I was busy over. Thank you for the Borough Office of getting the assessment information over to me. We processed it all, cross-checked it, made sure all addresses were fixed last year, which we worked so hard to do last year, and those are being sent out now to everybody, um, for the assessments. And this year, we're also making sure we have a plan in place and we have these procedures already lined up and voted on to to collect any delinquent payments. There have been some, last year especially, there were some that just kind of, we had to either write off or notice people had moved and we weren't able to decide of certain things. So we have a procedure this year. Um, and they will be receiving the bill. Then they will receive, if they don't pay it within thirty days, um, they'll be receiving certified mail, reminding them of that in another thirty days. Certified mail, again, we're doing it as we've been told to do. After ninety days, we are, have permission to send anyone to collection. So we'll be following that, that procedure this year. So hopefully that'll be, that'll be good. But we did fix a lot of, um, incorrect information that were in the forms last year. So I think that's gonna go, you know, great. Um, and that's really it right now. So we're just, next month, we're really excited. Thank you. Oh, yeah, any questions?
Good question. Just the collections procedure. What, where is that coming from?
And, um, last year, when he was still asking if the borough was going to need to process these or follow up and per our bylaws, actually, it is Sauterton Connect's responsibility to collect any uncollected funds from the assessment payments. It's not the borough's. So we did some research. Our new, um, bookkeeper did a lot of research on professional collection agency. So we will be going through an agency on that, and he has all the details for that. So if you'd like to know, that I can certainly get you the company and everything.
Sure. Uh, answer, after you've gone through collections, if there's anything still uncollected, is there a lien issued to those?
There will be no lien, and that's why it wasn't going to go through the borough because it's not a lien type of a charge for that reason.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Just one, the facade grant, is that, uh, is that something Sauterton Connect says or is it part of the Pennsylvania facade?
So, I think that's, uh, as done and put together, um, and that we have funding, that we have assigned from the economic development budget right now, which we obviously hope to increase over time with the success of this program. Um, but there is some that we already have in the budget this year. Uh, we took a lot of the funds that last year maybe were used for some other things or weren't used to, um, and Kylie did a lot of research on this and worked with, you know, a lot of research, uh, to come up with this. So it is coming from the Sauterton Connect's budget for economic development.
Yeah, for the future, look, look into it because I know there was one now.
I did meet with Steve Malagari, yes, represent, and, um, he gave me a thick book of grants for Pennsylvania. So we've started to actually go through and look at it because we did just notice that Hatfield was just awarded a three-hundred-and-some-thousand-dollar grant. Yeah, so we were talking about that the other day. So, um, we've kind of highlighted a few in there that I think we can go after. Yep.
That I've seen Kylie, it's, it's, it's not well-known, and it's only small money, like they would pay for maybe materials, and then the owner would have to, you know, make the improvements themselves, but it's out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Every little dollar. And yeah, and it's, and there is money to be had in this state that people just don't take the time to fill out and go through the grant application process. But I think that we are aware of these programs and have the manpower to do that. But I think that we are aware of these programs and have the manpower to do that. We're gonna for some of that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other presentations or court files? Alright, then we'll move forward to the administrative reports and.
The administrative report will be in your April fifteenth packet because people turned it today. Hard to share that to others in the packet, so if there's a few social stuff, um in case there's anything they want to report tonight, she was kind of like up eight, but I don't have the
Okay, perfect then. Or, you know, whether reports go or even just give a high level, can you follow up the detail in your administrative report? So uh Mayor, anything else? I need to see again.
Yeah, two quick events happening in April. Now technically this is by Telford Happening, so. It's a version of, so you think you can quote is happening at uh Fire now. Uh so I think it's a good that the door, John.
Yes.
Okay. And then uh the fire company is having cash payment April twenty at five P M.
That's all I have. Thank you, sir. Uh Chief.
Uh good evening. I actually got my report done about three hours ago. Uh we've had it yet, but for the one hundred thirty-two traffic stops, uh we issued um fifty-two original warnings, I'm sorry, fifty-two expectations and twenty-two written warnings uh for people with equipment violations or other sorts of things to unfortunately fourteen crashes last month with two minor injuries. Uh we had four arrests, two hundred ninety-one public service calls, forty-eight assists to other agencies. Um for clarification, that only not includes our neighbors, but that's anytime we're assisting any federal agencies, so we assist uh the military background tracks and that kind of thing. So in seven hundred ninety calls for the month, uh which is a seven percent decrease over last year's time, uh which is great. Uh our rest numbers are down at the moment, uh but we have several investigations we're conducting which will probably lead to arrests. Our major crimes are way down, which is great. Uh unfortunately, our minor crimes are up almost fifty percent. Uh that being said, um we kind of catch them after they do it. Um but it's a little too late after that part, uh but we, when we get them, we take them to court and we do try to either get money back from them or have them to get needed service to make good for what they've done. Um on the twenty-seventh is the National Thrive Take Back. We're gonna be participating in that again. Uh our new police candidate passed all of our insurance tests for the academy, so now she's Montgomery County Consortium's testing for police officers again, also on twenty-seven. Um our manager and I have just about finished all the paperwork for the grant representative Malagari. I don't want to be competing with either grants. Go in. So we should be expecting that money shortly. Uh because we already had purchased some of the items on there out of necessity, uh we sent an email today requesting permission to use those ones on other pieces of equipment and we've been preliminary yes at this point. So that's a really good thing. Uh the two vehicles that we had listed on Minnesota bid were both sold. Uh for a hundred dollars for that. Uh so they'll be gone by the end of the week. Uh our new police vehicle is here. It's gonna go get equipped on April fifteenth. That'll be on a two-week build. Uh and most importantly, because I've been talking about this for almost three years now. Uh as of tomorrow, uh two and a half year trip has ended where we were trying to use the Montgomery County Prison as our central booking, which means that's where we take people to get fingerprinted and photographed. Right now, if we arrest somebody, we have to drive them to Lansdale, drive them back to the county, sometimes drive them back to Lansdale to go back to the county police each other. Uh we are now in with Montgomery County Credit Facility, so all the unnecessary trips are out, uh so we have one place to go. Uh and I know the the board supported us on that, so it was a two and a half year battle, but we got it done. So I appreciate your support on that. I do have a request and a, well, one more thing. Um we are now at a hundred and twenty-two policies done out of a hundred and sixty-four, so we're making good progress uh with our going toward accreditation, which I'm very happy about. And at the work session last month, purchased the new one, a used vehicle in Toms. The price that I had given the board was five thousand dollars for the vehicle. It's ten years old, only has thirty-six thousand miles on it and has a catalog value of a little over fifteen thousand dollars. Um the price was a suggestion based on other vehicles that the police department has sold. There was no contractor, there was no signature. When someone looked at the vehicle, they decided it was worth a little bit more. Uh so they're requesting eighty-five hundred for the vehicle, which is thirty-five hundred more than I had gotten board approval for. Uh I am requesting approval to spend up to eighty-five hundred on that vehicle to replace uh the two that we've gotten rid of. Um if you subtract the money we brought in Minnesota, we're paying eleven hundred dollars for the car uh realistically. So I am requesting board approval to be able to purchase that vehicle or to increase the amount that was approved by thirty-five hundred dollars.
When's your timeline for for the purchase of that vehicle?
Uh they're putting out their new tent.
People can, okay, uh I don't, I don't want to think emotional, it's necessary. Are there any objections for Chief purchasing that vehicle?
No.
Alright, without objection, Chief.
I appreciate that, thank you. Uh um and just a question, uh the last um third Friday is that gonna be the only one we shut the ride down for? And to clarify, the last, the Minnesota lot next to the River Building, not good, okay.
Correct.
We'll take care of that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public works?
I like, like uh Daisy said, I'll be working on one for this week. Uh the big thing that we did finish up in uh May was the uh the sewer main project in Wild Avenue and all the laterals I think completed. And so they have a pretty four, four cross trenches to base. And then we'll be ready to uh work with our equipment rental persons became order on the uh evening of that burn. And then final on this schedule already for early May. Uh things we were doing this, this month started going on. Uh Russian lead collection should start this week sometime up. But we will do the lead collection for the whole month of uh of April. Uh uh scheduled to start work at the pool. Well, we completed our part, but they had pool people who were starting, our plan was starting to do the faster this week. Not looking good for that happening this week. So hopefully it'll be your next one. And one other thing we got going is uh our subcontractor Trout Brothers Concrete will be in. He was supposed to start tomorrow, just not looking good. Handicap ramp, so left down at West, West Broad and Washington Avenue. The apartment building is a bit in the theater. Those are canon. The uh I think the other one in Asher, and then they got the quick last term and boy, little other two. So they're gonna get done with this one.
What are we getting at that? Oh, that's sort of like right in the way.
It's, it's a lot of ups and downs, but we actually well got the rate on the permit and we asked the handicap ramp down on the sidewalk in front of steps, which sometimes isn't the best, but we got approval for that. So that both walk first rail call, so I think it's backed up to pave it right along there, then it got down across uh that little spur of Washington Avenue. And it's gonna take out like thirty feet of sidewalk built this, this ramp. And it's pushed out to line up the, the one that's in our Hartsgate place. And uh one other last thing we did, we did uh talk to our seal master. Gino, our guy. He's uh getting us on the schedule for the uh for our coding, the basketball. So there was a picture that floated around. Everybody seemed to be, you know, good with the color scheme he had, so that's what we're going with now, but uh it is time, I mean. You don't need to know the color, they have all the color, but you just gotta bring their color, color, but
Right.
So we're hoping to get on the schedule for that.
I think the park committee, the Satterton Park Committee would probably like to weigh in on that.
I haven't had, exactly.
The Satterton Park Committee, uh not necessarily the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Yeah, the primary.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I can point it out.
Like Jeff, basically, we'll probably take the color.
It's called, when's the timeline for that?
Uh we need a better date that one, we've got, we have you plug in the system, so it's probably a month out, I would say easily.
Yeah, if you can, then that.
Sure.
That could be.
Yeah, I didn't have a good only a picture. And that's, but it's clear, it showed hands. I mean, the color charts. I have one with me here, I can, I can leave with you, so. Uh they're looking through colors.
If that color's wrong, you're gonna hear them, yeah, that helps.
I can only see it from a vertical.
Yeah.
Turns out, yeah.
Um yeah, he worked at Queens also, he worked there already for Satterton, I think he had a, a theme in his syndrome.
So I have other any questions? The ramp, is that on Broad Street or on, are you talking the Washington Avenue side?
Could be.
Of both.
The ones we're doing are on the uh north side of uh Broad Street. At the intersection of the bank park lot.
Yes.
The, the full part, the circle one.
Right.
And then that he gets between on the corner there.
Right.
Awesome, bro.
So we'll be there at that and then that and
That is the first one we're doing.
And well, it's later name the same.
Or correct, yeah, that's what we up at the intersection, pass some of its faded way, but it's something be straight across.
Just that angle.
You actually fit something in front of the twins?
Yeah, it's going right in front of the school. The, the handicap ramp crossing from the theater over will be right in front of us in steps. And that's what we put, requested to get permission to do that and we probably got it end of last year, pretty late in the year when I got it.
I just saw the sidewalk is so narrow there. I wasn't sure you'd be able to get something that actually.
It's probably four or five feet, it's five feet.
Is it? Okay, doesn't seem like it.
Uh looks more like the traffic light pole and stuff in there.
Yeah.
Where the ramps are going, it's open up.
But it's not really handicap acceptable to Richard's point. If you're walking from Unnickers, that building forty-one West Broad Street and trying to cross over, pass the twith and into that parched lot at the back.
Only handicap ramp there for two.
They didn't have a pole like right in the, couldn't fit a wheelchair between the twins and the small retaining wall. Right? I mean, but it is not moving the pole, but.
No, I just works two in here, so well, okay.
Thank God, I think you're mad like I didn't do only like that much, right? But hey, if it passes. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Stephen. Good to have you, Phil, sir.
Yes, thank you, um Tracy. I just too matter for this evening. Uh the first matter is actually a litigation matter I'd like to talk to Michael about in executive session. Um and the second matter is, it's actually on the A B. It's on your agenda this evening. It's an authorization advertised for ordinance. Uh it, it's a couple changes to the non-unified pension plan. Um it is I guess some key changes. There was a provision in there about employees hired after um I think we made that in first twenty sixteen and they wouldn't vest until every year twenty-five years, which was different than all the other employees at the firm. So now everyone's vested after ten years in the pension. Uh another key change is the polling races. Um there's some changes in that uh that they won't be mandatory for uh people that uh retire, um you know, going through. Okay. Um so that, that's the background, but I'm sorry.
And I think the third was
Oh, I'm sorry.
Drop.
There was a drop, there was a drop addition, yes, thank you. Uh the changing around exit pensions, um you know, no co-eligible for job, any retirement, you know, and that's elected to, you know, partake in that program, but any new hires in uh May of this year, um current employees who are not vested, uh you know, to ancient will not be eligible for the uh of the trial.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for Don? Alright, thank, thank you. Um the manager?
I'm just gonna wait till the
Okay, very good. Well, are there any committee reports for this evening? Alright, here none. We'll open up for public comments. If you're a borough resident, property or business owner, we'd love to hear from you. Please come up to the mic, state your name and address and we'd love to hear from you this evening.
Calvin London, two twenty Montgomery Avenue, Pearl Residence. I am not here as a resident tonight, however, I I'm here for the students of the marching band at the high school. So I'm the president of the band booster, maybe some of you guys know. Um we just had a very successful for that bingo on the fifteenth of March and got some support from the the ladies here from the Satterton Connects, very helpful. But anyway, um and and Tracy, you hurt me when you let everybody go because I, I had an audience that I wanted to catch. So I need people. So um April twentieth, it's a Saturday, we're having an indoor home show at the high school. And it, it feels like to me that since the new high school has been built on lower road community interaction with it, it's kind of like there but not there, sight unseen, right? So anyway, um I just wanted to uh invite members of the council and the public to come out and support our home show um roots there. And I don't know if anyone has ever been to a indoor percussion show or not. It is a little loud but it's, it's really exciting and it's, it, and they, they the, the, the form is, it's really, really exciting. And it's a lot different from an outdoor marching band at a halftime show. And most of the time when you have a a uh indoor band competition, the people in the audience are there because of the band. They're not there because of a football game or anything like that, so it's very engaging. So uh the other part that um we do need volunteers, um and um so if you are free to volunteer people to come in the parking lot and to um man a couple of other stations and so on and so forth. So uh we do have a sign up genius for that. Um you can go to the uh Satterton Big Red dot org website and maybe find some um information regarding the sign up genius. And, and, and it's also something that you could do, um you know, for a few hours. It doesn't have to be an all-day thing. Um and the other thing, and normally I'm not in days because normally we have our our, our meetings on Mondays and every time I come here after those meeting, you guys are gone. But we're not having our, our normal meeting, so that's why I'm here tonight. So moving forward, we, we're having another big uh fundraiser on Memorial Day weekend at the J C's uh the parking um we're, we're manning the parking lot there too, so uh it's all volunteer and it's a non-profit. We have a huge budget and this is how we fund our, our, our budget, so.
Were you in April event? What, what's?
It's April twentieth.
What was?
It's, so I said twelve in the afternoon, first performance and it goes all day after that. So it's probably from twelve until eight o'clock. That is at the high school.
Except.
It's indoor, yes. It's indoor percussion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry. And I, I couldn't tell you right now what the cost of the admission is, but there is a, there's, you'll, you'll find out, yeah. So come on out. Thank you.
Thanks, Calvin. Anyone else? Hey, go on, let's go on to place. Alright, public comments are closed for the
We have I am offered bid, I am proved I am still under the bid. And we, uh the chief leader here, uh we sold, took out And we, uh, the chief leader there, uh, we sold two thousand four Crown Vic sold for four thousand one hundred dollars. We have purchased it for a thousand. And the two thousand three, uh, Trail Blade was sold for thirty-three hundred dollars. We purchased it for four thousand. Uh, the skate park equipment sold one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And the portable ice skating rink sold for seven fifty. Um, the, uh, antique roller did not sell. We had a lot of, uh, calls about it and we relisted it for a lower price. So I have it on, run on the TV, so then we'll coming on back to you with, uh, on that. So this evening we just need to approve the resolution order to officially, uh, some, uh, items that were sold on.
Okay, that's, that's item B A, everyone. So may I have a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve sale items that were recently fit on municipal about line in resolution twenty twenty-four dash O two second.
Now I have to, I have to come there. Been called out. Okay, I have motions by counselors, Monday and Hall to approve the sale of items that were recently been initiated as outlined in resolution twenty twenty-four dash O E. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, it's take court on favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, Mr. President.
Um, and also just to add, um, the reason we use municipal is we don't have the chance of these. So, there's not really been much chat like that. So. The next item is, uh, as ours talked about, was the authorization to advertise for order number twenty-four, so fifteen O two, amending the new, uh, the non-uniform employee pension plan, um, as you went over it, it was vesting period, which is for these for the ten to ten years from twenty-five, the cola provision and the drop program.
Are, are there any concerns with taking a motion on, on this advertisement this evening?
I have a slight hesitation about it. I'm kind of like disagree that the pension should be lowered, but the vesting years should be lowered, but we didn't actually hear from Gerard about the implications of that. So, I mean, cause what that will do is make some employees who are currently not eligible, eligible right now. So, like, some actuaries that that I think is relevant. But that's just my opinion.
Are you proposing that we put this off until we have, uh, Gerard come back and explain?
But it'll definitely change the pension plan. If we have at least, I can think of one employee right now that's on your team that would not be vested. Couldn't do. We haven't got that report from Gerard about what that would do to the pension plan. And we did just have a conversation about the issues with the pension plan. You know what I mean? But I'm not on council, so, okay.
Yeah, if anyone, um, if, if anyone's so moved, then please make the motion. We can deliver it further if necessary. Keep in mind, this is an advertisement and we would not necessarily do the approval until the May, the May regular session. So is there a motion to, uh, for the advertisement?
Uh, Mr. President, I make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the ordinance twenty-four, seven, sixty, O two, amending the norm, non-uniform employee pension plan.
I'll second.
Okay, I have motions by counselors, uh, managers, uh, to authorize the advertisement of ordinance twenty-four dash seven, sixty dash O two, amending, uh, the non-uniformed employee pension plan. All right, now let's, I open up for further question, comment.
Got a question. Um, John, just because you're vested doesn't mean you can call, right? You stop, then you're hitting a certain age.
You have to hit, it would be ten years, and I think it takes sixty or sixty-two.
So you could become vested, but not be able to use the.
That's correct.
Okay. So I don't know how to this would be. So I think even though you're fifty, it doesn't change your, your ability to retire if you're not.
Right. To the mayor's point, I think, I just asked Stacy, I think before the actual hearing on this ordinance adoption, I think the, the actuary could, she would have time to weigh in or have them weigh in on that issue that, uh, the mayor brought up.
That's great. So we could get that, we can get that information and then we can be ready, we could discuss it hopefully at work session, and then we can, we'll have a thirty day advertisement and then we can approve in May session. Uh, there may be, if the drop was part of that. So the other concern that we had at work session, I believe was, uh, just making sure that, I, I think, I think you covered all bases, John, and the, and, and, and what you covered, but we wanted to make sure that especially, I mean, to go ten years is very favorable as opposed to what was in the ordinance before. But if there are any negative connotations, then that would also be good to know prior to us. And so what, what we were concerned about, and I think the concerns are alleviated, but that we didn't want anyone that was thinking they were getting some type of retirement benefit and would not be. We can just confirm that at work session too. That would, that would be two great things to be, you know, off of our back. Whether it was in writing or, or first being good to, to have that, making sure we're not negatively impacting someone that thinks they're getting something more, more favorable than, than the resolution if adopted would negatively impact.
The employees have all received this, um, tweets about, uh, before, I don't know.
Okay, and.
About that and, um.
Did you receive any, any, uh, do that?
Some clarification, but, um, almost all the people, most of the people here are vested, um, currently and would be eligible for drop. Uh, they did hear, uh, that time, it really affects mostly the new hires for the most part. So, um, there's about, and then it's like two other employees. And, uh, so we did notify them we have to cut out, but, um, like, they may watch us, they, um, team, talk.
We'll have plenty of time to, to clarify later. Uh, John, just one more thing. The cola, the major domain cola is that for the retirees would be, that's a, that would be a, a council option if you wanted to allow a lot of the living and just, right?
Right now, if you are vested in your pension and you could retire tomorrow, then the, the new provision won't affect a cola raises, okay? For going forward for new hires, the way the ordinance is drafted, uh, they're ambitious to the ordinance. Um, it's up to the discretion of council to give those cola increases to employees who are not vested at this point. Or May thirty-first.
Or by May, by May thirty-first, if they're not vested. Okay. And that would be one thing. I don't know if, or when, there are any employees that would be like a May, I, I would just need to have like a one, you know, five day cutoff, then that would, that would be it. So we might be able to come like that.
Okay, then, um, and, and then they're vested. When you say that they are vested, that's at the amended ten years.
The May thirty-first, they can make.
It would be right now if they're vested in, in their, in their pension.
Right.
You're not gonna be changing anything.
Right, but if, uh, if we change pension from five to ten, we'll have two employees that will all overnight become vested.
That's correct.
Yes, then they could also participate in drop. Now.
Because they're changing simultaneously?
The drop program would be, they didn't, they, they weren't eligible for drop or the changes. That's, well, they weren't eligible because they weren't vested.
The vesting period and the drop change are happening at the same time, so they could have been vested before. What are you saying?
That's correct, yes.
Did you hear from those two employees?
I didn't, I didn't hear from them at all, but they did notify of it. I told them that they had questions or come talk to me about it. It's not, because I have not heard anything.
I've received some negative feedback, but probably weren't vested.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean.
Okay, so we need that clarifying feedback from those, from those, any, any affected employee on, on, on the policy. That's, that's what we needed by the work session. Okay, then, uh, let's take that to the, so all in favor of, of the advertisement, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, and the last is the emergency action plan.
Oh, um, just a few things, Chief Cole, who has served as an emergency management coordinator for the past several years. He will be stepping down, um, and, uh, our, she, Brian Young Cole is stepping up. She is the emergency action line, um, so, cause he may, it's, it's really just changing the theme and everything else, so we have a, uh, for, uh, to do that. And that's what we're, for the.
Before we take the motion, so the thing changes, does the appointment, but were there any changes to the emergency operations plan other than contacts and the emergency management coordinator?
Uh, every two years, total thirty-five requires the plan be updated. The, the plan in a confidential form includes all of your information, all department information, so that has all been updated. Uh, and the only other thing that got updated was some of the contacts in our emergency, uh, resources and in some of our group, um, not the contacts for those, but the, the meat and potatoes are the same. Nothing has changed except those, but.
Okay, and.
Julie.
I looked at it.
Yeah, it was just, in the absence of, of Charlie.
Here, um, I don't know if you, did you tick it, but sure, I did read through it. We got it, um, what was that? We're gonna have a meeting last month and we decided to have it, you know, when I read it, it, it not changed exactly.
Okay, and I would encourage council to read it. It's a, it's a lengthy document. Steve had updated it last couple of years ago. It's a really good document, and we do have some roles and responsibilities within that document, so we need to get, have an or, to kind of, to read it. And this is a corrective action per se, but it would be really good in the future for us to get a red line, uh, word document what physically changed from the, from the previous conditions. Okay, let's take, uh, a motion, what do you?
Mr. President, I, um, want to make a motion to approve, adopt, and place into immediate effect the emergency operations plan of Sartorton Borough and appointing Chief Brian A. Newhall, emergency management coordinator as outlined in resolution twenty twenty-four oh nine.
I'll second.
Too slow, Richard. Uh, okay. I have, uh, since by counselors, London and Littlefield, uh, uh, for the approval with action and, uh, placing immediately with the emergency operations plan of Sartorton Borough. When Chief Brian A. Newhall, uh, the emergency management coordinator, as outlined in resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns?
I have one comment, they didn't, she's mentioned, like, you mentioned about pages. There isn't page in, like, the show, every page, every G updated, or there's the index, whatever.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for all your years of service doing that. It is, it is, it is a big deal. We thank you. It's one of them. I am some, uh, you're not some hero for something that gets no accolades, but it's something that if we need to implement that plan, it's really, really important for the, for the, any other comment? All right, then. Excuse me. Any other business?
Aye. I'm supposing that I make.
I second it.
Okay, so, man. Thank you, everyone, for coming.